Eka sambogo leo, woki wogo imbabami ya imamami, ebomi, aburumi, awa ebemi, ti awa walori koni yi. Eshigong, ekujokuwa le ekusuru lata ro. We thank God for giving us this day and many more to come. Adupalo ololo, ah nisheni, ashitio. Welcome, Princess. Eshigong, ekugogo ba. Ni agorolo, ah yiri mbayo, ilinyeni Yoruba Nation, the sovereign Yoruba Nation. Turi Nigeria jaga jaga, yajuti koli mi, kujati wawasuti jaga jaga lo. So, ki wogo jiti, ni yaju, kama bitan lo. We thank God. Ema ye ki, ah, ah, ti, rojo musulukun. So, let me call Princess, Konfuani or Shiti. Wani kama balo turi, eniba, eni, kama babo, eni balo lubaku, ah, nibaku nijiwao. Doctor Yefule mukinyo, God bless you. Welcome. Ije kama shinkota lishi, for now, because awa olutwetu, awa sinibi leni. Mama wa, mama wa Sandra Kukula, the family awa walori di, they are doing some world travelling for the family. And Babawa, wanshinko kono nidiyo, barista talabi, awa nonshinko, nibe. Mori yalori mukinyo, and mureki Doctor Biyo Yefule, God bless you sir. Eye ki afi, awa iwepwe nineni sipadi, kafi nonse sibuga, awa kontatuwa, wani kani kapo yiye, onlon ye ni. Eh, inii, wama pe, awa inkoto shipadaki. Oni ki lafe mugo, kilo inform kota fe shileni. Awani babo mankoni pe, do dimu, Jesu farede, beni Jesuwi, motibi yami, Jesu tidiyo. Yami tilo, wati babami tilo, Yefule tidi, emu kati ma filos, yuli ma tidi. So, ele i, oha kere shinkotan kudua, ni le Yoruba, tute, the practical one. Tepe, osho juwa, yonotumbo, wabi lo, wa kubao la she she, she jasi, kilashi. Mkota len shileni, it's normal, reasonable. Ti obansi inkon individuali avebe, karivio mokota anshiwo, ka wo. Akonsa akondi kusoro ni, olola konso shinkota akonseni. But, wati ni, eh, wani omi oshetani koko, belo re shiri, bo, oshetani koko. Turi, elitio bari asblok, leva paru, oye. Or, ejowati ri asblok, ngubusino fridaz, ojadi. Ulema wa lastu, but amon pe, inajuti, ta wani yi, inajuti, umal, ti wepe, umamiri, kiti watepe, otumbo. Wa liye ni, eh, ololo, nishiri, yonotiti mi, mi abara mu oriye. Awakonda gwele ugu, opada wa li, awakoba da, mi eighteen forty-five. Turi, yele, jeke mi le soleni, pe, oma Yorubani mi, kinsipalu bu rega. There's a difference between being proud and be arrogant. So, I'm a very proud Yoruban man. And tamba ni kintuwaye again, I tundye Yoruba, bo mi, ni balan, ah, mi, ni darakoma Nigeria. So, kota mashilini, shiti ni, ilili ka Konfuani wa shoriti, ti ti ti, amama aposi. Ejo, ejo ki, aronsepe awa yon, today is Iba, Ipa Di, Atimijila, two hundred and twelve meeting. Ko atariajano, ko ni kinshe ro, madi, we thank God for fofuwa leo yofe. Tepe, ambe, kegebi obesin be shu. Be noni, opai biti boboa, nila ye wa, lumama, losi wadju. Eshigong, ejo ka gbole no, oludaliwa, turi, awa yokuwa ba wa liye, eshigong, thank you. Princess?
Yes. Eshigoni, adupeni awo olon, utofuani, eh, abara, Ati okun. Ti afi darakoni, ini, eh, ugo ni fun, oludumare. Eh, mure tusho wa adupalo wogo, wa non ti, awa ni joku, ta kuyite de tujawa. Eh, adura wa non, ni pe, eh, ibiyonjuwa, koni jasofo. Mure adupalo wogo, awati, eh, awati, awa tuonlo, lati bawa soro. Omia awa jokowa, eh, opalo, ni yonijoba, eshigoni, adupen, and funwobo, funwobo, awa te de tonfuwa non, ni ugo. Te de tonfuwa ni ibiyonju, ni, one way or the other, adupen non, pe, eh, ojo ni ti yo. Eh, 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 ni non, ti, atu tuwa ni ikale, amatwa ko, mokha Atimiji. Ejo ka farabale, ka bo, leno awa jokowa. Eh, kade tumle mo orokon, abimijilo, ni no mubun kota bakwa le ni. Eh, eshigoni, ah, se, oloto said earlier on, ejo kafi, eh, invitation yi kafi pe, awa, eh, yowa. One way or the other, that is join wa non, pe Ati wa ni, uli opo, pe kwa, goa. Eshigoni, adupen, eh, ojo ni tiwa. Oba, e, shirisi ni. Eh, awa, eh, oki wogo, wa pe, akujoku. Good day to our fathers, our mothers, Yoruba sons and daughters, wherever you are across the world. I have the great honour to welcome you again to this sacred gathering space where our voices converge. Hope and our nurtured ambition is sharpened. Whenever we come together, we are doing so to reaffirm not just our commitment to the cause of self-determination, but also our belief in collective wisdom. In this moment, across border and time zone, we build something greater than anyone of us can build alone. This weekly meeting is not merely a ritual. It is a living, breathing expression of our agency and unity. In this space, I dare do not just echo, they evolve. Questions become strategies. Concerns are transformed into commitment. Through our shared story and update, we illuminate point, path forward for our people. Every time we gather here, not to simply just speak, but to be held. Not only to listen, but to act. Our journey is not defined only by our speeches, but rather by what those speeches inspire us to become and to do. This town hall is a compass. It helps us orient or reorient ourselves in a complex world and remind us that we are not alone, even when the road is hard. Today's, as always, we should all speak truth with courage, listen with purpose, and engage with dignity. Let every contribution be a step forward. Let every voice strengthen the foundation of our collective dream. Odudu, thanks and let the deliberation begin. Please call others to join us. Odudu, agbe wa, emi koninda le Yoruba o, i wonko. Over to you, sir.
Thank you very much, eshigong. Only oro, mi oma yiti, onlonge, ati bom kati washo. Wama pe, somewhere along the line, amashendi, the prince form. Eh, kene, eh, mokota Atibohe, ama jusita ki, awa yawa kontule, kawa non, koli, koli jolae. Eh, etun, abawa share, belugu wa, wa, toku. Wa liye, pe, idjoku ilaski, ishi idjoku ason. Kinshe epe, koli vriwa, kinshe epe, turi pe, afe popularity. Mofi pe, unlike what people were saying before. So, ayegwa fe filmosni, it is more than two hundred and, it's not two hundred and twelve meetings. Time te vatishi, fifty meetings, wati mudi, yupe, ah, Princess Atayonani, oh, Doctor Yefule niye, eh, it's not about that. And a lot of people are mistaken by doing what psychologists call eastern generalisation. They assume, oh, ofe filmosni, ofe somi fangokoni, ofe shekini koni. See, oroi lo, shinkota ma fi sentimenti. When I was in the Boy Scout, let me say in the Wolf Cup, I was trained in the Western Nigeria that if your parent commits an offence, you are meant to arrest them. That's the kind of orientation tofuwa. But we're now in the Yoruba Nation, tamahu profession, tamahu ojori, tamahu ipula wijon, kama fi jorgena. Today pe, we now put the message, eh, eh, we put the message in a secondary position. Today we pe messenger, oju message, love. We don't want that kind of Yoruba Nation. And we've often said, if the Yoruba Nation of our dream will be like Nigeria, we are wasting our time. Toba ye pe, ru Nigeria la infishage, ipi atun fe lo, afe ilutuma ye, imone, ti oku, ni bo ri, ru ita fe niye. Ilu imbu, tepe, ti abalabo, abamele lawu, ilu le Yoruba, ti abalabo, abamele lawu, ti omodima yofun. We're looking for a nation, turi shinko, turi nje, omode yahu, abi agwa yahu. Tepe, ishe lo, bu ishe, kegeba shikowa, dusty ilu imbu of our dream. Mure ni kurokuroba, nono fa aditi, eh, oni awashin wasibilosose, odi awa konlogo. Eh, this is not a self-determination that people will see as a tool for political bargaining. No, it's not that. This is real. This is genuine. Eh, awa motanti bi, wadiwa logo, afe ki eni keni. Ka afe kobi masini eru, Ati moppe, mkomijil, eh, fidomo, alifogunde wa, abi ka fogunde wa. But our own vision, like we said here often, isike kafi ogun, ilutoda. Kegebi awa yasin, bilalat Africa tani, I must have my child, ni United States, kuli bapa sport, ilu ye, kokon e bale. But awa wai, tepe, anybody tewati dioma Yoruba, okue ti bale, mokun tiwa sekio. Ni turi, awa tanti wa before, eh, kegebi awa tanti lo before wa, tony foresight, tuti disappear, ni sentawa unimon. Tepe, wa liye, si farasi, awa yon, tombo, wa liye, boriso kepe, oma Yorubani mio. Iyala wa ndrimofo, onlo eka kujok, losose, tepe wa logo, mure moppe, by di tan ti, awa lutu. Tamba, tuke klero sila, amo idi pataki, tushi pataki fawa, lati ma joku, lati ma asoro. An tosudukono, ode, itotani ka totele, ribiti bati wuxinsin, ebedi yon tregwe lo. So, ibita wasin juku niye, ta anfilkulu ku, mokoto tishere la ni osse, atu wa biye wo. Ah, itui, itui kafi tarawa lulubu, kafi enkoli diwa aso. Bo pari pari, kati koni lele, ituguo wa nibi, ulufu, lele, unfe. Afi yon, bo kinsibu epe, beluli si palimewa, utishere be, bo, we thank God for yofe tofuwa. Adupen, wani kakakurewa, amure rudu, afi uwe, ewe alofe, afi biran. Adupen gon, bibeli so, mure makuma wa nu du fati kurande. Only in the book of Malachi, only those who love the Lord speak often, one to another. The Lord accents and put their name in the book of remembrance. Ni no iwe remembrance tuta, ni, oreli di Yoruba, lu mafo, rukote mi, Atiti, lu ma fisii. Motuwa so, kegeba sheman so, ni boboba, pe, mi olatayo, okede mbey. Oma agobomoro fi jesha land, mi onida le Yoruba o, eh, yinko.
Emi ade olao, atayoro, olamidilo, mi onida le Yoruba o.
Doctor Yefule. Sister Yemisi, this is the confession of our faith. We can all unmute ourselves.
Yemisi, onida le Yoruba o, odale Yoruba ti. Ana amo, mi mi onida le Yoruba o, muda le Yoruba ti.
Mi yo Yefule, Yoba gidini mio, mi onida le Yoruba o.
Asho. Eh, yokungo, Mr. Coladi shoda leni. Be ri yo, be bo yo.
Pambele Yorubani mi.
She.
Amo kale, onida Yoruba.
Asho.
She don, don, doni kisoyeni.
Ah, ba olashefemo.
Ba olashefemo, ba olashefemo.
According to your word, let your tongue be your ID card.
No, no, yeah, it has always been, and, you know, I don't need to assert that now, you know, I mean, you know, everybody more, pe, I'm for, I'm for Yoruba Nation, and Yoruba.
Eja, eja katu, eja katu bolat.
I want our Yorubani shawkwa to get we, odale, pambele.
No, what I'm trying to say, I'm a member of Yoruba Nation Global Directory, so I've never in my life since.
I'm ope, eh, ni.
No, 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 don't heckle me, please let me express myself.
Okayo.
Yeah.
Angbo.
Yeah, so, I would never deceive Yoruba Nation.
Exactly.
My life, emi odale Yorubani, and I would never do it, because me unshamo ali.
I'm a much.
We are happy that you said this now.
Ele, ni Yoruba to diya mo ali, awa non ma dele Yoruba, mko ni da le Yoruba, eh, brother.
Baba legba Atibo.
Emo, wo shere, brother he, brother he to diya baso jogon, ogun da le Yoruba, she Yoba ni uni.
Oshere Yoba, so yela fe.
Misotiwa. Misotiwa, she ba mo luini, oma yeh, eh, oma luayiati, miso.
Whatever, whatever.
Eh, eh.
Kombo.
Ekole, 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 so pe, ekoma baso.
Ekole, whatever, Atibo, kota fe gola, Atibohe.
Eh, okay.
Dopa ya pe, turi pe, turi ya, eje ma Yoruba, eh, ni da le, eh, mo ya, oma Yoruba, turi.
Ah, wa ye ni, wa, omo bi, omo bi, oti wa ni.
Awa kombo, ni, laje.
Oma le pambele, ni, ni bo bani nu family, ni goe ma reni, to ma da yi.
Of course.
Eh, eh.
Yela fe. Eh, ele party, ele party, lose back to yesin.
Eh?
Yeah, chari party, lose back to yesin, because, wani kia kololo, ni pe babo, lele pe, ba 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 ba, oti pe one million baba, ali pe ke asoro, isi, eh, che che, wa soro.
Okay, tira beki so, che, ebeki kosi.
Onida le Yoruba, ishe, chari, chari oronye, oronye, beke yon muleni.
Okay, gomodi so, eh, mi Colade, eh, mi Colade, oma oreko, ni da le Yoruba.
Ben, that's it, you are not talking.
Eshe yalodi, ebe toma wa ti obani yalodi, turi so, mo pe, who left the cat out? Eh, ebe yuti complete, eshigong, yarisi ta Yemisi.
Emi wo tama, ni onida le Yoruba o, wo shere, one layer.
Chari, embo gari, tele tele.
Barista, oto ni, wogo, wedo ni, yalodi. Shubu, awa lo kipe, nibi ba yo, awa ni yalodi, number one.
Oh, yes.
Beni, beni.
Okay. Tali, 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 wo diu uti.
Beni. Emi ati brother, mashmaga leta, afi gawa sile.
Abio, it is well, thank God. Eshigong, Prince Kalejaye, muti bopa, ino, ti sope, ni da le o. And sister, epe, wogo wa la wa, nibi, mo fi kusoda le. So, adupalo, eh, lidu mari, eje ki, Ashia, turi epi jolin, kufe, atungo.
With Lucid, IT teams don't have to start from square one. Need a work order process? Describe what you need and generate a flowchart automatically with it.
Asho, Ashia wa ti, we thank God pe, kune, duru, lati ma fe, and ni abari domari. We are going to put welcome to the Yoruba Nation. Sa yemboli eno, oma bawa, ti, ama fisii, ibiti bobo juwa, ye tanti ma lipata kwa tiya, ti Ashia emawa la, eh, awa Ashia United Nation. We thank God. Ni, asikori, eje ki pe, brother wa, the accountant, kwa ba wa si, itu ishuno, ejo, ebawa be awa yon. Eh, mwa ni vicon, tiri watin so, asoro, owo, asho pe, irwe, oti awa, ontoni, nisheni, pe, kuti tole. Ni tode filole, ni pe, eh, Iropo, bobo utati fische. Leni, toba ni ki, ani, Amot Brigade, ni le funwobo le Yoruba, turi da wobo le Yoruba. Koni kujepi, owo ta dani janguara, lu ma sheni, oto be. Afibati kapa, oto ni kama pe, oma, ah, koni ra bafuni, latu mopan, kango bo. Aberi, ah, mko si le Yoruba o, onon pa wenyo, si yo, on pa wenyo, ni otun, luci. Eh, onpe, onki onsa, olao menjoku, ni le ti renjoku, tombe pe, owo yon, ma fisii pelebe. Abega kilanjye, tiki to, afola elidumari. So, ejo, eh, kanli, ni pati wa pe, ashi motali si, eje ki pe, eh, ni ti, omojoku, turi mpa benire. Bawa wa, eh, Coladi Thomas, kwa ba wa si, itu ishuno. Thank you, accountant.
Thank you, Ashi Barista, okede mbey, thank you very much, you know. Eshigoni, ekujome tao, ede, eku, Happy Easter to those who believe in the doctrine of Jesus Christ. So, Happy Easter to you all and everybody. Munipe, kintuwa ba inlini, katu soro, nipaa, oro u, tujé, koko, oro, Yoruba Global Directorate. We kejoke, ke madbagwe wa, we, odi wogo ba, ti momansoro, we kejoke, shanu fwa, ke, no, alowo. I need it, no, alowo, in, didi didi, turi, I need you, I de need, ti ova siye, in, kuli si, Directorate. And ola, yi lenje, ati ola olon, landje, so, eshigoni, funwobo ba, ba tankpe, itenda wa lon. Kusiba ta, pe, itenda wa lon, tero, alowo, so, afe, bukudi reyi, ojo de ni ti, awa uni be. Wogo, ibitu, ibitu to, wogo lo matu, so, yani moni kiva, tu soleni, pe, ejo, eh, no, alowo, awa ukowo, genbi ba yo. Ibitema fu wusi, uwa, ni, secretary at, asofu yi, i, accountant ema fiyo wusi, ejo, eh, no, alowo, kefua lo. Buje, tu naira ni, buje, angba naira, angba salin, angba bugwe, usiu wata, kingba, angba salin. Angba dollars, adenba, eh, euro, anyone nele fwa, lati fi, lati fi shawosi wa, kefina, alowo, pe, lu shetanchi. Ah, ti pari she, ah, ti, ti bere la la, because ashi wa lenwe, ashi wa lenwe, ah, ti bere o. Ah, ti bere, so, ejo ema bino, so, um, olu awa, ke lu awa, so, oromi o, jubai elo, ejo no, alowo. So, bo shiri niye, bariso, okede mbey, I've finished o.
Thank you very much.
Ekononi wa.
I'm a be damaswa.
Sure, ekononi wa, all Yoruba, anybody, so, je karu, jiri, banguje, ijeburemo, ijebo wadju. Ikiti, ondo, egba, egba do, ije sha, ilori, we are one and the same. And this type of town hall meeting would, oh, help wa indirectly increase that awareness. I've said it before, Iba ti issue of, iwa ijebu, emi jesha, tokoko start. It was a concerted, you know, I want to start, e, muma want to start eh. It was a concerted effort, lati watered down the differences between us. Betawi, your team gansi. Monotie, during those early days, actually, the meeting held in my office, in Philadelphia, uh, uh, group of Yorubas all over the United States nowa. Ekona, I want to start, we, Agbedo watered down the difference between us, started, emilobu, obujebu, awa ijebu, but mansion eh. I would erika, uwa, bi dogoni. They were so angry, they thought, is the old way of, eh, ijebu like ije sha, ije sha like ijebu, ondo like ikiti, ikiti like ilori. People thought that was what, what was at, eh, at play. Whereas it was a concerted, this man is a professor, me ni daro ke, he's a professor, a high ranking professor, one of our great universities in B. He came up with the idea, so, otin ba le kansi, example, and Mr. Coladi tonsa, tonsa egban si. You know, so, to know that you can be your egba, you can be your ijebu, you can be your ikiti, you can be ondo. Those are nothing but dialects. Very much like the Bostonian accent, inbi ba Ati, Philadelphia accent, Balu, southern accent. They're all accents, it doesn't change them from being Americans, it doesn't take it away from the Americaness. Di to, ni wet afi so, esi, omo ba da kini so, ko make ya, to si omo ijebu, omo ije sha, omo ilori, to soro differently, into the kini. Our glottocronologist wa la, the professor of linguistics, insofua, they ke, all languages tend to change with vowel shift, consonant drift, bobo kobe ye, when it be bobo accentation ye, bobo language is change shit, of individual, of different dialects. But it does not make Yoruba ni, eh, doesn't make, eh, ilori man less of a brother to an ondo man. So, you know, I'm kini etati she, eh, ariko on continue, and in a, in a place like this Directorate, eh, people from different parts of Yoruba land are more at peace with each other. Ke shepe, I mean, this is shichibo, so, ke, muma professor to start eh, this may be the first time most people are hearing this. But the effect of what the professor started in my office, enjoy eh, oshi otitonde, bitatin soron si. So, as people get more comfortable with each other, it builds a stronger Yoruba, eh, Yoruba sense of things, Yoruba cultural identity, eh, and it helps us provide narrative to others about who we are. So, to the question, um, to that particular question, yes, it had been very good.
I'm preaching here. Mude moe we life we like you know, all of my from watching. Hello to.
Ashego, thank you very much and our director's speech had just been republished by other media organizations. And I got a copy from another platform. The speech that Princess delivered earlier today. Eh, Koiki Media, Oona Publishing, which is good. The day we understand, we pay alitosodukonkolu. Nkotanso unity tanso. Oniye, kepe alin impactarawa, ta nishi omode ya u, ade nishi ya ba ya u furawa. So you pay, you know, your value in power. I have a video, I don't know if I'm going to convert it. Oh, Timi Loju, we pay owo shakabula. Ah, donate here. The Lord in Nigeria permit. Eh, welcome, Sister Tino. Eme got him missing. You know me, you know me to be what he's here in, tell him on my pay. Eh, Bule Jefu in your rubber, eh, the re, eh, the so see. All right, two one le, welcome, eh, Jacky, eh, to video you. Eh, Joe. So, unity tanso ye, we need it. Eh, affair, how we in Kiropo. Ki omode she be omode, kaba she be akba. Eh, one ito mo, omode mo, ababon, onlanda ifesile. And as a matter of fact, oh, you can't move, we pay abalaba. Belugu go, owofugo, owofugo, awa abalaba, wa awa abagidi, ala lubari kata ninibi. What you come up with, can she, oh, do you really call me? Alba, need to really pay, aman lo yo, abalaba, she come. See, omode ma, wanilele. So, oh, wait, she, nka ta bole no, ababawa, niye. And duratya in baba, the man got out of, bita, but they pick your long, they care. Come to alone. So when we see our children.
Sister Tino, tiwale.
Eh, want tiwale. So, i, i, i don't know, man, Jeff, what a barrier, oh, my wow. He was she in Colorado. Eh, if it's, you know me, don't. See, only me there, who let it there, oh, my your bunny, ah, who are you? Tamanso, tamangbole no, oh, be, what you want me, ah, wali me. Oh, my, wow, Lola, ah, wali me, oh, my, wow, Lola. We just, our people, our Yoruba parents, don't leave just for now. Oh, my, Lasho, ayeni, all of my, you, ki, ah, je, ayi, oh, my, my chiwa. Niye je, adura, timu ba, fungu, gua, wey. See, what it could, you, niwi da, mbala, he, tiwale to traumatize many people. Ayi wa, funwa, let it to Malu, I be worship. Eh, Sister Tino, you're welcome, I'm going to go back to one of our earlier, earlier question. So that your voice will be on record and it's even more important. Because along the line, we discovered that we were not recording the meeting. So one of the first question, eh, my, you know, you, John, Tabirini. What is the significance of the we, weekly town hall meeting for the Yoruba nation?
Okay. Eh, pele, eh, kule, gogole. Eh, my, been, okay, mukpel, eh.
Well, welcome.
Swingi, ati, allergies, gogwe, lumba, me far, so, but, hmm, it is well, I'm here. Um. Barista, eh, ba, atumwe, you, mukbaga, tell, so, Ashego. It is well, okay, so, um, any significance, eh, meeting why, eh, weekly, Abinko? Um, oh, oh, please, yale, yale. Um, because. Kokokola, rough, add it, see, koto, she be away, eh, da, it, me, oh, gobe, eh, mama, me, ati, mama, me, to, ah, Lori, ito. Um, eh, me feel, pay. Significance in koto, she, kokoto, she, but, attack, pay, and sorrow, ni, gobo ba. Loses, eh, ni, ba, to, long, ba, ti, funwa, la, eh, oni, we pay, ki, ah, when you are. Number one, we pay, at bottom, eh, um. Reason, eh, I find joke, ta, fi, paper, gogwa, la, my, we pay, reason, eh, we pay. Affair, je, ilu, ati, je, lu, tele, but, affair, by, ilu, ah, badakata, na, je, ilu, ah, badak Yoruba nation. So, gobo, ah, la, more, ah, so, ke, ah, when you are, dead, eh, yeah, reassurance, eh, we pay. Or, you, she, low, as she, ni, face, we pay, affair, kilo, ah, kodaduro. So, eh, she, but, attack, eh, let him, she, eh, but eh. Oh, they, she, but, attack, let, they, ki, gobo, ah, when you, oh, oh, pay, ki, she, pay, ah, when, dan, du, kuka. Aba, oh, continue, oh, kaway, ah, biti, oh, rich eh, ah, biti, eh, oh, continue, eh, no, no. Ni, oh, fe, fa, eh, one, da, wa, la, le, Abinko. Eh, no, reb, eh, then, oh, to, she, but, attack, eh, come, ah, ba, our sorrow. Need to, eh, sorrow, shitty, and suffer, ah, eh, di, but, attack, eh, to, feel, eh, je, we pay. Ama, fair, she, eh, make, ah, ni, lu, ah, badak. Ke, na, ni, pay, oh, ni, low, the, fake, eh, true. Be, eh, mission, man, ni, face, eh, to, Dr. Yefule. And every time, oh, man, that, oh, you, eh, my, you. Because, mm, mu, so much appreciate, eh, not only your intelligence, but, ikme, basheman, be, or, oka le. Ati, basheman, no, ah, badak, silly, we pay, ah, iton, ah, oh, come, it, eh, me, it, mo, jo, omode. Timi, oh, my, ah, biti, momo, ti, call, eh, me, too, eh, man, da, ah, badak, si, be, eh, me. College, eh, wa, eh, eh, be, by, la, oh, ba, ba, la, ba, ba, wa, ti, wa. Eh, come, by, anyone, she, eh, wa, by, anyone, who. Kilowatt, data, ah, watadi, oh, momo, momo, you don't care, eh, taribai. So, gobo, eh, wa, ta, eh, eh, man, they come. Eh, con, eh, no, Latin, she, eh, con, eh, no, Latin, she, eh, ditto, fi, they, ki, gobo, ah, Latin. For what, eh, for what, so, what, eh, Latin, eh, in, koto, toto, eh, fun, ah, eh. Ni, ba, talan, she, eh, lu, ah, back, eh, because, Yoruba, oh, oh, my, eh, bonio. Abi, even, ah, ah, usa, tank, eh, de, le, law, oh, oh, sha, usa. But, all of us, we are like nations in itself. So, eh, eh, iluni, abadja, boy, eh, lu, tanko, saben, eh, ni. So, ke, ni, ah, wa, ti, je, amfani, eh, Latin, but, what, eh, fun, fi, wasi, ah, ben, eh, talaw, eh, eh. Ke, la, fani, ta, je, ni, bay, eh, ke, la, fani, ta, je, ni, see. Ke, ni, konburu, kuto, ndesi, wa, ke, no, shame, pa, wa, ni, be, je, be, jo. Kilode, ta, oh, ah, balak, ba, wa, oh, oh, Lori, eh, wa. Ah, oh, kabi, eh, si, wa, oh, tanki, do, ya, oh, di, ta, le, be, di, eh. Kilode, ta, eh, do, kosi, be. Kilode, ta, ah, no, to, fi, fun, eh, eh, parment, eh. So, gobo, eh, safety, security, gobo, eh, big power, gobo, ah, run, oh, no, oh, oh, research, eh. Oh, my, to, law, see, school, ti, eh, oh, ni, oh, lobby, eh, eh, la, bado, eh, 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 la, ta. Eh, le, potong, tirak, aton, oh, my, law, school. To, eh, eh, come, eh, coach, eh, eh, co, research, eh. To, research, eh, to, eh, do, lobby, eh, 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 oh, Lori, eh, le, chance, eh, me, after, marry, eh, eh, say. Eh, you, eh, come, to, furnish, eh, to, to, my, eh, eh, oh, go, eh, to, male, fish, eh. In, koto, my, flim, oh, who, ah, been, con, di, eh, loss, eh, eh, for, eh, be, eh. Because, ah, listen, oh, be, ah, ton. Sure, eh, 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 oh, combi, ah, ballet. Eh, no, be, ah, do, eh, eh, amari, ah, one, eh, no, eh, mama, do. Ah, yo, la, man, Jeff, ah, oh, be, eh, eh, oh, simbe. Eh, wa, ni, pay, kadake, come, ah, sorrow, and, eh, this sorrow. So, eh, joke, oh, you. Lo, jo, jo, mo, gogwa, eh, ma, wa, eh, ben, lo, jo, jo, mo. But, ni, jo, taba, ti, ri, ah, ah, toro, ba, ti, de, come, ah, so, come, ah, she, ah, ah, let, eh, eh, reason. Ta, she, but, oh, ba, eh, be, ke, you, oh, no, lu, eh, kowa, desi, meti, oh, wa. Cola, sinu, oh, kowa, ta, oh, yeah, ti, ba, ba, ta, lo, ba, mule, land, ta, ta, lo, gogo. That, eh, le, she, oh, co, eh, eh, wa, she, oh, koto, ah, oh, my, eh, like, oh, ah, wa, la, ti, be, come. Oh, ah, fi, malu, je, oh, co, malu, eh, like, baby, to, eh, eh, co, eh. Eh, be, je, oh, koto, eh, to, eh, fi, ba, when you. Eh, to, ke, ah, oh, mobile, eh, la, ba, eh, ni, ke, care, eh, ke, oh, my, eh.
Mm-hmm.
Has played a very, very vital role and is going to continue to play a vital role as we achieve that objective.
Thank you. Doctor Yefule, one of all on lagwara, I believe in missing a do marry. See about a consistent. Uh, Mkokokja di ninu on, uh, uh, Bawaleko. Timo de bilipui ama she. Nile Yoruba. Imo, ondu ye, imodi uye fua, uye ye, ade wa ama free she, amon kote kashi. The Yoruba Nation. Ama N C referendum.
Yep.
We're going to have a emon kote monsosa. Ona byowa. Ati she tele. Sister Tinu. There's a loophole for us. That's what lawyers do. We can be a catalyst. Uh, achieving constitutional force major. We've seen it. We know about. What the constitutional force major. Uh, we knew what the constitutional force major was about. We, we noticed and it's on record that the highly reputed constitution of Nigeria nineteen ninety nine has amended. Is still. The position that is running the nation and we are aware. Of everything being done under this constitution that is highly reputed, even the right of entrepreneurship. But we need to see that again. We will stop them because I think we are getting to a level where the international community, um, are doing that sorry. Uh, so but we will talk about that. That would be covert, not overt. Uh, but so I joke with, I said joke with us. Uh, Bobo Ilu, quata quata, no manni, think tank. We used to have something called Ego Maniko, here many people. The best way to steal money is to do it in the open. But yet in Nigeria, who do I do? Kusi. My friend went and joined politics, obviously waterworks. Only waterworks. But we thank God for what he has made us. That men and women of our integrity will come together and put the nation first. The weekly, I said, the time of meeting likely to evolve into something more than. A con sorrow. Because in Taban sorrow, the young barra, we still meet people who will love it. I will need individuals within the directory that will try to places and do things. We need our first generation diaspora. In your own mind, what do you see?
Yeah, we pay, she after Tabatik, that you banish on lens, so yeah, be.
Even before.
Yeah, I think. In Kotti. I feel barely suggest, I want to. I, I'm putting this on the people. It pay in Kotti suggestion to Tewa. Everybody mamu suggestion wa. I wanna amutiwa fua, pay bye bye ni, I feel pay. So we don't want to go back there. Want to go. Forward. Affair, affair, lay good example. Affair, we are one country totally lay good example. Catap. N'epa, the way, touchy shit, it want to feed that, T O C corruption. To corruption, da, oju, Bobo Elule. We want to give them a good innovation, a good advice, a good. In ye ni, oh, I get Yoruba because to like me. Apart from, eh. Eh, I found that to Dali. One fee Dali. One face if full army. So I don't want let you be. Also, come on, you're ballet, I want to cook, see there. See there, I go, I want, I need. One, he pretty pretty to down, fuwa, one more. When you remember them. You remember if you that their father did. So. And to bad, Dale, oh, my ballet, oh. Eh, Barisa, so let go, it pay. Barisa, so let go, it pay. Oh, my day, Buroko, Obodue. Ready, ready, no man, Ben, yeah, yeah, one more. In your country, more, more, Timmy, Fred, Daruko. Bye bye. Oh, man, no, see, ready, ready, be, you should put on shake, you know, the internet. What yet, um, follow, who, what, T T T T T, one, funny, pay, where the love rises? So I want to more, it's more, but sorry, we need that, oh, no, my more, it's about, oh. So Tabatik, so I pay, where the love rises, at my, I want to, at many, Tom, by. Or Dali, anybody, so, but see, in your bag, get to bed, your darling, killer, expect to go, no, get. Or Dali, no, my game, Bobo, what they, my ballet, no, no, two, I'm about to cook, eh, cook, oh, oh, I, you want to cook, eh, no. So we will let them understand all that. So everybody, I there was shoes, select, so any, to bad, they were fed, be, be, oh, oh, my darling.
I share, I share you, Mary.
I share God, thank you very much. Uh, at the, move, move, uh, I believe, I call to, I tell you. Baba, I feel, you're welcome. Uh, uh, move. Sister Tinu, the map, but I die, you know, move, come for any insight. Uh, she, uh, on comment, I need Latin market.
The new by the topic in sorrow. And because of my rule, you know, directorates. Because of all of our more directory to pay. A more long for the your band directorate. I want to while I burying but I burying by and what we decided could change. Ah it was a decision of our elders. When I. And I look at directorates. You pay Allah. I believe in you. They were not too much. Prayer. About about was there. About Biera was there so many people are there. So I just pray again. And they are still there with us. And they are watching what we are doing. And our consistency is very profound. So we are very stable. Because now we are in the disposition. To what might change. Like the bodies change, I am a move. But organized institution can change. We are this too short. So we didn't change. I want we had the policy at the beginning. The we're gonna spend any time. The aid of the organization my approval. As less the board of uh board of trustee. I brought to you that one who will approve it. We mostly we do what can just go and take a dive from the uh the account. So we see. They they have no power to take any dive from the account. Uh my matter you know, but nobody but to see it and approve and send it. And after I said it, it takes to the board of trustee and now prove it. That is why as an institution. And everything we do right now, we are on the on the zoom, tons of all the zoom say, is it? They are program. They are there on the background to make sure. We do what we are doing with babies like that without any kind of conflict. So. Our time. Come on, look back we uh we are with we are always intact. And I don't know why not at the ground I'll come back. Because happen being a part of the board of trustees. Who have access to know who give, who doesn't give. I've been working once it's too busy. But every every meeting, no man said who to directorates. At the money's care. So maybe I live to our own way. It's a gift, remember? I want. Eh they are suddenly watching what is going on and then with us. We call them with top and so many other people. So I want to say this to be. So wait and shit is of my thing. Uh without knowledge, people are powerless. So we are the uh knowledge. So our organization is evolving. I say that story because I mean that's where I'm good at. In the more we try to do it in. I study people, I follow progress, I follow progress like that. That is why I don't quit easily, okay? That's it. So like a but I gave you a point to tell about my book. I've been involved at homeless ministry for the past twenty one years. I came to America when I was give my love to Christ, I committed with all those great problem. And I went to South Dallas and I began with homeless people. And I continued. There are so many. Uh accolades. That is the the one of the most powerful congressmen down in America and me. Texas, uh Jasmine Crockett like that. When we are doing a Yoruba, almost Yoruba in Dallas. Yeah, I hosted it in our in our place. She came, in fact, the the also more but he move on doing yeah like that and our future. I just put on the film. And so many important degree tree that are that are recognized that is important to what they are doing. But because. I was. They'll send it to us, we house them, we take care of them. But we are not about making public in only Facebook. To fall reason or to make anybody get busy, no, that will do. So but now I'm writing a book. That Moses, David and Zeus, they are passed up before homeless and needy. The reason is to just make sure not only Christians, to make sure everybody knows that, okay? We are called to serve. Anything that I need is to raise up the for the less privileged. And that's why the book is on me thought. We are my my uh my 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 lunch. That's it. So we're going to go through all the support, all the prayers and to be doing part of this organization. The honor that we have. I wonder if the way directory is global, not just we, we are not talking about joy the mouth. Our president in Australia, in Canada, in America, all over the world and Nigeria are very formidable. And all of them, they take their resources, we are not just we, we are global and just talk, we are not just talking. Okay, so we wait for Australia to give us instruction. We wait for the secretary in London to give us instruction. We work for Nigeria that are there, it's okay, where we are going and those in the US like that. So we are global. So we thank God for that and I want just to remind us so we can get sending and motivated. That what we are doing is great and what I do, we are this too short. We are not going to change. And we're going to evolve to a path based, a knowledge based organization for our continent, our our nation, Yoruba nation. So nobody can just go there and just do what you want to do. We're going to expose them. We're going to let them know what they are doing because we are people of knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. About Kato Shola in part Nigeria. We've a case, we show to daddy already. I've been fed good about to launch. Ever launch it. If you saw recall, you become a value to get. We.
I would 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 daddy already. As on my website, uh apostle adibio dot com.
And you ever ever type as even. For people who may be interested in the book. And of course, I I want to our YouTube video later, I wanna hurry.
Very, very, okay. I would type my website to to you.
If you're anybody to manage anything to affect humanity. Let us know, we will support you. And uh. But we at the right time, we will all be informed. I've been caught on she for our maki kiri. I'm on my line. Me Nigeria. So uh to watch a sicko, I'm. I've been caught you cutie. See all of us. What you fishy be, I do a visit website. Eba hala, ewe eh, eba hala, keka, kechunfamwe. I to my pay, oh, what about you, Mbe? I bit on low, I bit on the. Uh thank you. Mufa eh eh leh eh, what you call the be meet it actually, I mean, can't you push your question and answer? Baba, you would have been hearing about the level of insecurity in Nigeria. Only Kakaki, eh we are more code. He play low play. I don't know what you have to say about that. Uh in Kotoa, she mind it, eh me. They will pray new but it was already what I never. From day one, it was very decisive. Oh, long for come with drug license. Of course, he was an eli uh 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 an illiterate. You probably do not know the history of the world. But. How many in your humor? Any country to have a T-Bang. Gun license. Record has shown that genocide, no man. Because this gun, this license that you are asking people to surrender. Were obtained legally in the first place. So the first thing that the man said. And I want to say this, so that I want you to call it your. Wari cried. Wari cried not because he lost an election. And if the incumbent governor president is not aware, because you go to lose. He cried because he was not, he was deprived the opportunity to perpetrate the full on the agenda. Who are local. So upon winning the election, that was the first thing, you want to pull any radio license. The Nigerian NTA. Co useful more, radio Nigeria useful more. Then comes the ruga, the water wave. Boy, it's a concern me you. Nipre, me yeti alla were given millions at the price of reporting. You became Ministry of Agriculture and Natural Resources. Cause they told the stock more. And yet. See, I'm a full and it's wrong, but carry. He bought it, any car will come with drug gun license. Your kingsmen are carrying military issued. As such weapons. Kill us, it's calling me. They will pray. Oh, my Yoruba, I'm there. I believe everybody is have a fear in life. I'm not a politician, I supporting. And for the sake of the name that we all share. We don't want him to fail. But Baba, message you let the phone call, no, would you say, we could. You know Bible in the Book of Esther. When the the permission was given by the king. We can eliminate our due, he issued another decree. And as a minister of God and as a Yoruba person. And as somebody. Who I know uh has got connections. You are like octopus, what advice would you give? On defender. Speak to the camera, sir. One border pipe, no, what talk come out? Wario, she by really. The same strength he had. Me, I've a cooker, so sure. We want him to do that. These are the people that's kept quiet since he came to power. All that I you getting with of Yoruba Nation Global Directory. A descendant of that legend. He sent Chinobo. My Jekon power, neither. Baba, oh, my burning in the picture, you know, to what I did by you. Speak to the camera and give him an advice on behalf of Yoruba people. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Uh Sherry, my give you advice, so but. Yoruba, we are very advanced race. In our thinking, in our doing things. No, they fight the way I fully I want to learn daily. Daily me echo, me bad on, I break the muscle, we are very advanced. I want to hear. Wari, it wants sing, but wants singing. I repeat, because of their own primitiveness. And with the duty, the people were difficult for a model back that is she. Because no matter how. Come on, but those of okay, ah, I want to like, baby, my power, I want to see, oh, difficult to get it going. Because tomorrow, I do what, but the power, yeah. So that one is there, so we might not see Chinobo coming out and so you. Was to say that is that eh. He got a she low, he got a she low. Move a key, I focus, come on, that's she low. I want to want power, namely, make it easy, don't she don't she loss. We are sending the message to the one, to the who is here, to the who. Oh, oh, my, oh, 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 God. Oh, they're more, what they report to phone, go down she. And now let me publicly give credit to Barista Tyogiri. For what? Monitoring our language. On this platform. To the key, I deserve. Kim what the more, we are willing, you what they be come to take back, eh better, eh better to take back, who the guns? That wisdom from him anytime we talk, I really appreciate it. Because there's a statement, animals, Sony, the body. To our power, eh, better you, I'm eh, eh, who the guns or terrorism. Don't forget, we go on iPod, don't prescribe more like that, see, well, like that. So I want step, I didn't take it be, also be, we have intelligent and listenable leaders. So, to remember. But upon we be be be, our awareness to our people, like they did on do. They carry placard to go and show, I think that you are, wait, what are you doing? Wanted to kill, wanted to kill off us, they have told me. If they go on that place, there must be a way, that we got one, some, some, who are, we have to activate there. There must be a lot of some, but what, well, I have a lot of what. They go to the forest and empower them, that's it. So those things are what we need to do. I want to want to go all our state. We have to go awareness, to go everywhere, find Tony. Keep looking at the Nancy. Um Senator Shola. At eight one body, almost only, he was now online and speaking about his support for Yoruba nation. And God given, in fact, he was telling us how close they are with Nubu, what they are doing and what they need to do. To make sure Yoruba doesn't go under the ground. So all these things is what we do. So let's continue to do what we are doing as an independent. Eh, there is one more, and I want to be, I want to, I want to, I want lawyer, no one be, I want doctor, no one be, I want to call no one be to do the duty. So we have power. Everything, and I will now come to this platform and begin to tell us what you have done in the past. Oh, my, you go, but I do, we have done things that could allow young people see. Yes, I will control it. So uh, but you know, I've said. Oh, she, come on, she, Yoruba nation, my blue. Yoruba, oh, the, the, pardon, pardon, super, Nick, Kenny, so what do you, 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 only. Talk back to the to what?
He knows. And to them. I will say. I say you. We are not just about us. House. He needs to do the right thing and right thing is to let. You. I would already they have their own constitution. They don't should let them just be on their own. And let us know that we cannot fool at this moment. But you mean.
Thank you very much. I'm more about pastor. It is so. I'm on your back. All I did come for. Eh, move up with Dr. Yofule. He I wanna cover my address. I want lover lover. We need to let them know. We pay without. Uh kingdoms. There's no need for things. Because you got to think. Without kingdoms. And uh it may be too late to cry. When the eggs are off. And yeah, ever about our lover lover sorrow. I see meeting even last week. He did joke over. Can she be on take well look. Talk shop. I made contact. With at least two. Oh, Lord. The same financial. Our Baba, one ready, let it get fooling. But room bound. It's all in pay. Who see record. La niang. Ballet, you can kill it, go see law. Tell you value. Fair. Down down on it. I believe. It lay on our okay. So. La niang one be. I will come for Lucy. I will come with you. Problem time, I limit time. Because you let you know it way you're about. Oh, what la niang oh, Lord, they're you're about no. So. But she first she. I will carry she was. They're living of. They're living beyond their means. They are living beyond their means. About you. Then you are welcome. To the lady. Hollywood studio. For me, you are be man, Mary. One king for lady you. Our Baba, wow, she be. Wow, she be. In your the coloco, missing. He young, young, your rubber. He are who be be. He like it call coloco. Missing. Ever about so fun. Artisian meeting, security meeting, security meeting. In your babo bed. When these people were having their meetings to bring in thriller. Load of guns. And everybody men. We didn't see it on the media. They didn't tell us about it. Have you? A man shot killer, and he killed any one lawyer. Need be uh need be meeting on your fifa. Uh, I love it. And me, I see one me. Bora, we go, you know, me, Thomas, if I want you. Ah, more, which my joke, what do I? I deserve what I've been before. Ever about one, but I was sorry. I want no more. I want new one. We have a new record. In what are you saying, you both mean me? At so long, we call it. And by your son, but Bali young. But Bali young, we come out of our day. Come back. To have a day thirty percent of a small region of an African nation. Ni back only. Tell them control nations make Janice here. So there's you so. Let it eighteen hundred. The baby, I'm not promise one in there. He said, so there, Moche. We need to determine your duty to one. And allow you. Only leave you never. Doctor Yofule. On my tower. Knowledge, Danny, missing. But that great. Point of no return, nobody want to know. I get cancer. Speak to our king. Take really no more. I want to your loss to the bunny. If you family. Did you woman? Let them wake up. Please help us speak to them.
Thank you. My question. See, generally, Chicago. Kind of war. Field you. Uh, could you see or do? I won't obey. To you, Baba, wow. Uh, pastor, I did by your soul just a few minutes ago. Nick, we are a very advanced people. Could they see run away? Being advanced. Look, Jacko. Jack, when it lay you, but. Jagi jagi di jagon, I'll power you. I want to what I need. You. Till you, you, till you did every man law.
You were all you were in the city. That's calling me, who's a bear now? Just calling me, just calling.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, I would yeah. Jagi di jagon, but I'm one one be. The vast majority of all by the you, but. One ma, one knee. Tendency to be law abiding. But unfortunately for. The law to unfollow me, I want all retrogressive law. To what length by full on me. Where power from above mean from Abuja. Power from Abuja mean power from Fulani. Script it off for one by year near script here, then I should follow. I'd better. Jackie. Koyebobo wa. Qua, I want by you follow script. Won't follow analog script. You see it, digital, that is, go go by your con. What he shares in digital. So. Tiya ballet. Wow, no. Let it. But I want to live for Barney digital script can follow. You know me, you know me, but I do go. Digital script to my supply. Full, full on it. Co-co-co write it, let it was he laywa. Tell by the bow, who low, full on the book, although full on the Google, or most of the other thing, Bo Bo. One, a mag bar. A internet, but tell early, and you come on it, we. At it to you, wash it. At the protect it, look on con. The param, logic paramount. Important aspect of ownership. Yeah, Kenny. He can give me. Any mouth one script here. Oh, where the run, it could be Bobo, I want by here. No, me, me, the book, what you see local council chairman. Theoretically, local council chairman, leave the post one. What is a man, he, but what is she, but one theoretically, they could. She want by there, she pass it law to. Uh, to tie local council chairman directly to Abuja, elect people are in. Uh, uh, total as you could talk on there. Tom, but she. But we local council chairman. Now, while under the governor, uh, 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 under the governor of each state. Even though democracy. Co. Co-rule, and you, but it's Saturday, one really help me, but you Nigerian uh legal code. Co-sopay governor, who is the chief security officer of each state. Coming for good of by a shallow war. President. Neba. Uncoelue. Even though I'm a pay president in there, you want. Indirectly, either below or that's my funny. Me, I will vote some man for. Let it, you, you let it control. She born constitutionally, me, you rock, but there's a direct. Savile relationship. Between the governor and the president. So. T script, that's why it was lost, you know, governor. Lost you the local council chairman, lost you the. I'm over. I bad. The writing of the script. Can you grow the old script? Where anything to full on the base is right. Cause script, you go watching following here. Tell him, but one. More or later, bury question openly, but they're all scared. Cowardly scared. T governor, by the map, but we governor, uh, southwest region, to what the map pass script, he lost, he, he, the auto on down. If I there, they call bascript here directly from the president. So that I want by it, I'm a pay. Come, can you I want to get jag, jag, duh, uh, jag, duh, jag, go, you know, most of them are. Law-abiding citizens. Great members of the societies. So talk about in this script here, oh, my easy for let it function. Let it protect it, no more. Talk about it, back, oh, my look, oh, full on the one, oh, my look, oh, me, Bobo, do I pay you, I call on you, no, no. But then I come out here, bank, call, call, oh, oh. Haven't said that. I know that the social key explain here that that can you value my way. Oh, wow, oh, I'm over. Oh, what did you come on lower? Because they still follow the old script. Me, they're many body to share for any new script to my follow. I don't think so. So I haven't said that. Oh, my, I feel so I want over. Eh, you need Babawa. Eh, you need Ibaka, G, or Russia. T, you love, but ton, I'm back. You look, you over, see, you're more. I'm over, well, and here. One power, oh. With them, but left and right. Left, right and center, no power. I wear a rock. I want half human beings. Although like that, one knee, get get be in your cause. But what not, to, to be in, no, 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 rights of hu, of human, oh, to be human beings. Better, cut off, all that, the cake, it re. Lot on one into. Ruthless. Wicked. Satanic killers. One power, and you're power. I'd better, could he, Joe? Talk about full in his script, yes, let a Bujack be care protect it, eh, for I protect it, Louie. Eh, Qua, oh, door. Eighteen to thirty-five. Echo, when joining, but we can come and protect it, Louie. Can she be in Central African Republic, she don't protect it, no one. And protect each of your hamlets. Each of your towns, each of your villages. Protect them. Imagine going at power. Ton. What in power, but let it plateau, let it bounce, let it, Sam Farah, let it go, Kaduna. What in power from all those states, nothing power, one, but the, only a boy, I let me. Ah, cool, cool, she let you, you're about. You're all ba. You're all ba. To full, full on, ton, pa, one knee, bouchi, Nijos. I'm got to one, you know, to live, you pay, you a bear. Nijos. Oh, one, you know, let it buy, you a bear, like, oh, you bad, you know, you're lucky. A man got, we put what in power, look, New York, you go. You're your state in here, oh. So, one power, oh. Eh, you, Baba, what, tell by there, for you, I'm over empty lands. You have. To come to the aid of your people. Eh, Ben, you go, I be you. Eh, Bella, be you. T, I win, you're about. Ton, sing, go ton, shed in nineteen sixty-four. Ni ba wait, yes, sixty-six, ni ba wait here. Oh, my, oh, my, sure. Oh, my, sure, go. Let it stop. Cause I win, you were. I'll, you, you power, advanced, ideological reasoning. I'll strategically plan things. That, but what I call, I remember. Generality of us, last so. I want to what, ton, you bet, you have, go, you gonna go. At his top. Or we can come back, oh, my, sure. Somebody, somebody so come. We can stop here, only man, let's share. So, imagine, he laywa. Coa, water. Well, blood. By the human blood, bloodshed. I'm got to add, go towards the year. Already console. Okay, we call it nineteen. And okay, article called in nineteen ninety-seven, the moral, or nineteen ninety-seven, local, Tony, road to Kigali. By Professor, by Williams. Road to Kigali, article, yeah, who, 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 who teach you of, uh, Gaiden, uh, in London, in UK, no career. It was an earth-shattering article. To go into an analysis of what was going on in Nigeria, I'm glad, yeah. You better, okay, nineteen ninety-nine, what, oh, democracy, what, eh? I'm a pay them all crazy like that. But man, Sony pigeon English, they, they, they don't go crazy. Like that, taru, with democracy. Eh, Joe. Imagine, he. I go on that path towards Kigali. Kigali, ni, lower, ni. Uh, killer, who, who, uh, Burundi. Um, ni, East Africa, and they're who, who, Saku, I'm million, I.
Rwanda, you, doctor, I see, I'm be already.
God bless you, my dear sister. Imagine I go into Kigali, Rwanda. Imagine, hello. Tabate, I was on the edge, on the verge of getting there. Eh, eh, yeah, I put a stop to it by coming out loud. And making pronouncement at each villages, no, enough is enough. Don't do that here, in your land.
Hmm.
Tell, she. But what about what involved, will live to regret it. They will live to regret it. Alala, I call you, see, who.
I shall.
Alala, I call, eh, you see, who.
Shall.
Alala, oh, my, call, eh, you see, but what about you, about. Fight for you, to come, who come, I, 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 you, eh. What, what, I want to do, what, I want to. Ah, they go, pay, I want. Eh, anybody, yeah, encourage our youth, go out into the forest, call them, I'm move, go, go. Anybody, to my, the, the eighty forty-seven. Which is what should, should have been, should have been happening. Oh, they will lock my body.
Daddy. Eh, I get to what. Only I'm only help you. I mean, only share, they also, also, they are. In, eh, they are on to their neck, making everybody go protect, yeah, eh. Let by any little, little governor. To Laura, if I find one more, T, one, one, I want you, your, you're about to one, they call them moot.
How you about to one, they call them shaking, eh?
I want. One mute, two.
Mute.
I'm afraid the, um, I want to connect Middle Belt. What you are four by four. Who are we, you know? I will, I will counter by force. It is so far from one, you sorry? What is sorry, you want to see? Only to divide by the, the, the long, long D. Allah, you know, you get key, I you, but they. I want your love, eh, gee, eh, my shoe. Oh, what you know, oh? All of money, oh, all you need, oh, any money, oh? Eh, in Kotoa, but to do bad day, eh, key, oh, oh. Oh, I you do, oh, oh, cool, oh, oh, D. What you power, oh, eh, my, she video, eh, eh, she video. Well, who are follow him? Only to bar, no, my, he's a ruah, fito, my journey, oh? Eh, can no, oh, I love, oh, be, she balo, oh, oh, Baba, oh? Oh, Nickel, oh? I see, eh, eh, sure, oh, I see, oh? If you, eh, can, 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 um, 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 um. Eh, machine, eh? Just you to write in case the father, still, like, Yamala. You're also, but, okay? Bam, Baba, eh, she, really, eh? My own book is going to come out very soon. We seems to have lost our identity. All over Yoruba land, Akoni, look, um, eh? Akoni.
In favor of Ente Jefulani of his tribe that even doesn't reside, let alone have any affiliation with Nigeria. So, Kilode Tibo Boi, eh I Baba Watinu Bu, Ahmed Bola Tinubu, President of the United, eh Kilakbe, Federal Republic of Nigeria. Kilode Teshileje Womoko, Yoruba Yitaje, Bobo Ei La Ba La Boi Boi Ei, Nijoi Nijoi, Bobo Ei Tofidoi Ya Wodi. All of you governors, you are ashamed to us.
That's correct.
You are a very big shame to us. Eh Deke Je Wariin, set us on the right path. Amo Tong Power Logu Logu Tong Power Logu Logu. Let them know, Pamo Mati Igon, Wonche Sardine, Tako Le Ma Disseminate, Te Baba Wonlo Wonbe. But I walk back, okay, eh John Je John Muni. But it stops here. Eh Ti Push Wa Siki Gali, Ati Wanru Wanda Already. Eh She.
My sister, Ati Binutong.
Thank you. Omo Ali Yoruba Yonibino.
Ati Binutong.
Your Babo Day tomorrow will be talking, eh Baba Aliu, we are hearing at your Babo Day. At the same thing, eh, think Yoruba first, the road to Sudan. So, anybody to Obama, you pray, in caution, in caution, eh, need you. Ah, we literally, you be there back home, see, genocide, oh, to share it. Eh, what you are doing, that's what you pray, ah, she bring a gas on Baba Wacom, wow, literally, Bafunwa. This is not rhetoric.
Systematically.
I'm fat, I'm fat, you see, eh, capala, capala, bah. Kamaboy, Tokolai, Bakon, Lurombi, Shekini, Kalu, Boomcrack. Kini action, yeah, omo wali, see. Kamadeni, Babu, Kamadeni, Baru, Olushipata Kidu, this thing here.
Barista.
Oh, sorry, sister.
Barista.
On the ja, olaburo to goju. Ta Abamon, Kokon, simply respect anybody, more, Koto, eh Ja, Be, Lo, Omo, Wa. Ni Nu Le Wa, Ah, Kokoa, Ta, Mo, Ni Wa Ki Mo Ke Re, Toba Ni Problem, La Ti Fish, Gadget. Ah, Premi, Mashi, Boni Si Me, Mo, Pa, Mo. We can wash it, so, eh Ja, Cash, Disse, Boni, Ka, For, All Of Him, Mo. Aba, Osimilu, Ilu Badie, Vali, Leku, Ilida, Oru. Eh, Ti Kue Wala Ye, Oh, Do You, Three, Four, Jaxi. Eh, Vodu, See, Kua, Omo, Eh, Omo, To, Kosi, Won, Pa, Won, Ito, Do, Eh, Ra, Ye, Wa, Oh. Afika, Two She, Afika, Two She. Boga, Amo Ke, Ke, Tong, Pa, Pa, To, Lu, Lo, Que, Ayu, Do, Eh, Continue. The outcome, Ah, Olu, Ti, One, Be, Shon, Discipline, Shon, Discipline, One. Ah, Bo. Eh, Le, Mon, Got, Two, Share, Eh, Fugu, He, Sa, Fugu, He, No, No. All cars are robust and metal. Eh, Plur, Koto, We, Phantom, Ne, Kini, Cani. Ah, Ki, Ri, Ki, Bugu, Ah, Not, To, Shine, Na, Eh, Ba, Eh. Relics, The Nation, Let's Do It Properly. Eh, Joe, Abetu, What, I, Get, So, Eh, Ki, Ki, Ke, Re, Oh, Ah, Omo, Eh, Ole, So, Eh. Te, Ba, Fake, Eh, Eh, Baguette, Eh, Udo, Eh, Eh, Baguette. Eh, Joe, Eh, Ba, Ah, Lu, Ati, Oto, Finu, Eh, Ba, Mo, So, Oh. Eh, Ka, Fola, Fola, La, Ka, Folo, Eh, Folo, Eh. Eh, Mitio, Batim, La, Oh, Omo, Dia, Yo, Fu, Oh, Ti, You, Be, Too, Long, To, You, Shabai. Sister, I, Miss, Please, Don't Mind, Please.
It's okay. Shari, Ah, Baba, Why, You, No, Some Of Them, Oh, Yeah, Cash, Eh, De, Eh, Ni, For. Because some of them, Kamapari, Wa, I Want, You, You, Yoruba, No, Eh, Wo, Baba, Fenny, Fanny, Yes, Eh, Bokwe. Half Yoruba, Half Ibu, No, So, Bogo, I, One, Most, Sorry, Tabani, More, Sister, I, Do. Really, Me, In, 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 Fat, Anybody, To, Me, Back, Go, Language, Eh, Me, Le Fe. Oh, Sorry, Gongidi, Me, Le Fe, Ibo, Me, De, Le Fa, So, Me, Le Fe, Me, Le Fe, Pulani.
Yeah.
Because I want, I want, Yah, Wakon, One, Useless, Tabati, Dear, Oh, No, What, They, Bogo, Maladi, Oh, For, Anybody, They, So, Useless. I wanna be, Omo, Photon, Put, Eh, Some Of, I, One, More, Photon, Delida, One, Sing. Nobody wants to talk, Tori, Tabati, Fu, Oh, No, Oh. But, Kini, I, Bolafi, I, One, Mo, Who, I, Be, See. I, One, Baba, Baba, Watotilo, Omo, Who, I, Been, No, Oh. Oh, No, Amount Of Money, You Want To Give To Them, That They Would, They, 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 Eh, They Would Say, Oh, Tom, They're Back To Nigeria. Eh, To Yoruba Nation. Baba, Fanny, Fanny, Eh, Bosh, Eh, Parivo, Restr, 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 Oh, No, Pa, Won, No, Ben, Ben. I was listening to one of the video, What, Eh, The Rubbish, It's On, So, Ne, That, Of, Eh, Ku. What, If, Back, Back, Eh, I, One, Ni, Omo, I, What, Eh, Ni, Omo, Mo. Bokbo, One, Eh, I, One, Mo, Ke, 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 Eh, Omo, Mo, Omo, My, Deep, Eh, No, To, Buy, Eh. Because I don't understand. I want, Just, Take, What, In, Mur, I Want, In, Defender, I, One. Bokbo, Yeah, Mood, Eh, Ya, Ti, Eighty, Seven, Eh, Eighty, Something, Ninety, Something, Eh, Eh, Ku. Ikoro, No, No, Shima, Pa, Gugu, One, Last, Last. Because, And, Tabat, In, Safu, Ikku, Ikku, Eh, Go, No, Ma, Palace. Bogo, Wala, My, Law, They Need To Let Us Know, Are They With Us, Are They Not With Us? Ah, Need, Lot, To, My, Be, I, One, Back, Kokomo, I, Do, At, The, Mini, Quit, One, But, There, I, Know, To, Bogo, Eh, Bachelor, Oh, It, One, Oh, My, Kokogi. Enough Is Enough. Bogo, One, No, My, History, Eh, From, Ja, Eh, No, My, History, Eh, Yeah, They Do, I, For, Shai, Right. Bogo, One, No, No, My, History, Eh, Usa, Eh, Full, Eh, And, Back, On, De. Tongka, Do, I, One, Our, U, Sata, I, One, No, So, Come, Topper, Eh, Sin, Eh, Long, Ge, Oh, Yeah, One, Ba, One. Ta, One, No, Hey, Li, One, Yeah, No, Jello, One. Like I Said, Kam, Ah, Lemme, See, So, King, So, Won, Come, Ah, Won, Que, Roroni, Back, On, Ba, Ready. So, Ya, Ti, I, One, Um, Ti, Uh, I, One, Ma, U, Sash, Send, By, Eh. Tong, Run, U, Da, Da, Don't Believe, To, Tori, Eh, Sing, Eh, Sing, No, 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 Che, Sing, No, One, No, One, Sing. Anybody, Bass, Or, Any, Little Thing, Eh, Man, Niko, Los, Okupa. She, She, Oh, Non, Tell, You, See, Don't, You, Care, Ma, Pain. So, Enough Is Enough, I Need, Lot, To, Be, One, More. Kotae, 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 Fenu, Oh, Kawari, Be, Oh, No, Shima, Deep, Eh, Lu, Ah, What, Eh, Omo, Mo. So, We Had Enough Now. I, One, Call, Ra, Jet, Eh, Well, Ra, Kiri, Pe, Go, Have, Fly, She, Be, Ti, Jati, To, Park, You, To, Obato, Kiri, To, Fell, Out, To, Bad, Down, You, To, Ba, One, Way. Allah, Only, Ja, Ke, Ma, Fi, Eh, Ja, One, Come, Ke, War, Eh, Pe, Chi, Wa, La, Bati, De, Eh, Wa, Yo, Eh, Ni, Bon, Eh. At Bar, Oh, No, Eh, Ni, Bon, Eh. After, Let, Tabate, Eh, Ni, Ro, No, To, Ah, That, Oh, Did, Didn't, Sing. To, So, Eh, Pe, Nah, Enough Is Enough, What, If, Pa, One, One, It, To, Like You Said, I, Rot, Eh, Die. Eh, Let, To, One, You, No, Bola, Eh, Legos, Bos, No, Bosh, Eh, Padam, Eh, Nobody Say Anything. Eh? Ilu, Ilu, Lu, Olawa. That's, Boy, Mobadiku. Cause, See, Eh, Ni, Ah, Ba, Ba, Kotos, Sorry, Me, Pe. Bosh, Eh, Went, To, My, Job, Eh, Ni, I, One, Got, Um, Di, No, No, Cover, Be, One, Genie, Eh, But, But, No, Genie, More, I, One, To, Pa, One, To, Pa. What Is Going On? What Is Wrong With Us? Eh, I, Baba, To, Ba, Eh, Ke, Down, Ke, Drew. Te, Drew, Ni, Drew, Baba, Wah. Ah, Le, Respect, Eh, Eh, The, Safu, Respect. So, You See. Eh, To, Bang, Gan, You, Since, Eh. One, Eh, Agbalakba, To, Bang. She, Kine, Con, Sari, Oh, To, Ke, To, Sari, Me, Te, Mapo, She, Po, We, Eh, Mo. So, I, Ba, Ti, Wa, La, Basheli, Am, 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 Be, Tom, Assassin. Wish I Don't Pray For It.
Oh, She, She, Eh, Me, Lot, She, Bad, Drop, Sister. But, She, So, Also, Oh, She, Eh, She, Eh. Me, Last Week, Oh, She, Rob, Aburu, Me, Come. Ah, Again, On The Way From, Ilisha, From, Lagos, To, Ilisha, When, The, Much, Eh, Do, Pe, Pe, Who, Kidnapped, Eh. Ahmed, Desh, Me, Law, Wa, Wala, Eh. When, We, Grow Up, Hearing, The Story Of, Ah, Your Father, Who Come, Eh, Eh, Demo. Eh, Kri, Boku, Kotova, Was, Oh, Oh, My, Bishop, Eh, Do, Eh, Only, Go, Tell, You, With, With, Those Things, You, Got, To, Move. There's No Reason For Any Yoruba, Like You Are, Same. If We, Omo, Yoruba, No, We, Show, Good. Eh, Yonik, Bolo, Ba, Yet, Oh, Eh, To, Ba, Brave, You, Can, Omo, Ah, Genie, Be, Oh, Na, De, Eh, It's, My, Project, Ah, Le, Only. But, It's Not About Him, To See. Eh, Eh, One, Finish, Eh, Shoni, Be, Mori, Oh, Ta, Olu, Go, Oh, Ni. Ah, Baba, Wa, Man, Green, Con, Ya, Cora, Ya, Dis, Boloni, Eh, Shoma, Oh, Co, Ilu, Ke, Ba, Wah. Tong, Ti, She, Omo, De, Ati, Agbalaba, Tong, She, One, Lo, She, Eh, Me, Kusokon, Eh, Me, Oh. Ke, Te, Te, Lo, Fun, Eh, Boy, Ah, Mash, Oh, Pre, Shof, It, Eh, Madi, Oh, Beni, Go, Bodo, Shota, La, La, Come, Ah, Call, You, Beni, Go, La, Ni, Wa. So, Eh, Do, Eh, Eh, Do, Eh, Long, Eh, Ba, Oh, Ya, Wasile, Eh, Got, To, Share, The, Near, Bogo, Ni, Lo, Fair, No, San, De, Go.
Ah, Ah, One, Tong, Lo.
Tong, De, Go, Oh, Go, Non, If, Da, Oh, Go, La, De, Ja, If, Da, Oh, One, You, Bolo, Oh, No, Ni, Police Station, Ni, Patrol, Station, Oh. Is, Bibi, Li, No, No, Is, It, Kurano, Eh, Oh, De, Fair, No, Ni, Gu, Kuran, Oh, Fair, No, Ni, Muslim. Oh, You, Me, Don't, Possess, You, Lo, Ba, Oh, She, But, Oh, Ni, She, She, New, Oh, They, Hide, Eh, Omo, Yoruba, You, Embrace Them, Or, You, Don't, Embrace What Is God. Ah, Again, Eh, Magia, Turn, Ah, Wadi, Oh, Eh, Ti, Ti, Oh, Ni, Eh, Ba, Ba, La, Ba, Ni. Then, You, Con, She, So, Ba, No, Mo. Eh, I, Ba, Con, She, So, Ni, Malu, Eh, Eh, Di, Can, Oh, Find, Da, Malu, Eh, Ni, Got, To, La, Ba, La, Ba, No, Mo, To. Oh, Go, Oh, Full, Eh, You, Eh, Ba, Eh, Oh, Oh, Pa, Come, Ah, Eh, Ba, Bish, Oh, Tong, Ba, You, Ba, Eh, You, What, Oh, You, Do, Eh, My, For, My, Go, Super, Eh. Eh, Joe, Eh, Ni. Le, Yoruba, La, She, Wana, Eh, Ma, Be, No, Mister, Otomo.
Mister, Otomo, Eh, Go, One Second, Eh, Go, I, One, Baba, Wa, Tong, Lo, Red, Cap, Eh, Me, Tong, Lo, Filah, Baba. Eh, I, One, La, One, Eh. He, Wa, Oh, They, Got, I, One, La, One, Ga, Eh, No, Berry, Was, So, Good, Bye.
Yeah, No, De, Yeah, No, De, De, Be, No, Ta.
Eh, Wo, Eh, Me, My, De, You, Filah, Eh, Oh, Me, Eh, The, Berry, Me, So, Go.
Ah, Berry, Bogo, Is, So, Good, Eh, Eh, It, Wa.
Ki, Pa, Eh, Eh, Go, Eh, Eh, Go, Eh, Eh, Like, Eh, Eh, Oh, Je, Je, Fu, Eh.
Ah, Eh, She, Drew, So, Be, She, She, Red, Ba, Ni, Eh, Wa, Oh, Ki, Pa, De, Baba, Ra, You, Stay, Like.
Yeah, That's Right.
Eh, Eh, Go, Okay, Mister, Otomo.
Yes, Eh, Ka, Le, Gogo, Leo, Yes, Eh, Sister, Tino. Oh, Very, Bere, Wa, Call, Out, Sister, Tino.
Oh, In, Jag, Be, Jag, Be, Joe.
Ah, Sister, Eh, Be, No, Le, Nito, Ah, Amo, Lu, Eh, Be, Eh, Kode, Me, No, Son, Eh, Eh, Be, Eh, I, One, Mo, Lu, Eh, Be, Sek, Be, Come, Back, Oh. Eh, Wa, Show, Oh, After That, Eh, To, Eh, Be, Oh, We, Eh, Calling, Eh, It's About Time. Eh, Ma, Be, Gogo, Le, Again, No, Eh, Me, Eh, What, I, Much, Oh, Too, So, Oh. I Believe In Action, I Believe In Action, Eh, Me, Eh, Me, No, Negot, The, But, Eh, Ri, Wa, Do, Much, Ri, Much, Ri, Eh, Be, Me, Much, Ri, Eh. There's No Negotiation, I Make My Decision. The Bad, Eh, To Make It, Whatever Happened, I Won't Regret It. The Bad, Je, Po, Your Lady, Do, Mary, Oh, Yeah, That Is It, That Is It, Anyway, Um. Actually, Eh, You, Can, See, Sami, More, Really, Like, In, Contest, Oh, Yeah. I, One, I, One, People, Yeah, I, Wanted, Dad, Oh, Yeah, I, One, Be, A, Ba, I, One, Be, Be, Do, Eh, I, One, Be, Politicians. Senators. Yeah, Yeah. I, One, Pastors, I, One, Imam, Today, I, One, You, Bali, Me, So. Oh, Ti, Babo, De, Fu, Wah.
Hmm.
Sister, Eh, Me, See, Song, Konkon, See, Eh, Eh, Afonja. Eh, Ni, Afonja, You, We, Still Have, Afonja, Tell Me, One Hundred Percent, Sure, Eh, We, Afonja, Now, Right Now. Olu, Oh, Olu, I, Mu, Go, Eh, Afonja, Ni.
Oh, My, God, Ah, You, Do, Eh, You, Ah, Qua, Bro. Oh, My, God, Ah, You, Do, Eh.
So, The, Man, In, God, You, First, Son, Eh, Eh, Bogo, Eh, Kotti, Eh, At, The, Son, Oh, Bogo, Eh, Kottan, So. Eh, One, Power, Ah, Power, One, Dead, To, After, The, Ma, Power, To, One, To, I, One, People, Ah, Come Back To, Mo, Ah, To, Fi, One, Le. Right. One, Pa, One, Eh, Bogo, Ya, Low, Re, One, Pa, One, Ya, Low, In, Those States, On Target, In, Those States, And Other States As Well, For, On Those States. Chama, Koi, Ni, Wiki. I, One, Vigilante, One, More, Thirty, Full, Eh, Ni, Ah, Pan, You, Ah, Kidnappers. Ni, On Those States, Then, One, Pa, Fi, One, Le, They Were Released To The Police. Ba, On, Eh, Fe, Ba, One, So, Tom, Ah, Fi, One, One, Ni, Oh, Pa, Lo, She, Eh, Eh, Call, Reactivate Brains, One. Tom, Ah, Fi, Understand, Pe, Oh, Ku, Oh, No, Man, She, Oh, Come, By, You. You Know, Release, One, From, What For? This Week, Oh, Thirty Of Them, Three Zero. So, Me, Omo, Be, Actually, Ba, One, So, Tom, Ah, Bo, Ah, Me, Omo, At The Same Time. Now, Ang, Back, Eh, It's A Question, Oh, That's A Question, What First Question, The Second Question, Is It. Ang, Back, Of, Eh, She, Of, Eh, She, Eh, Oh, Organized, Morally, In The, Oh, Ti, Ah, Now, Eh. Cherry, Bogo, I, One, More, Ali. Talk, With, I, One, Politician, So, Eh, Me, Oh, I'm Not Sorry To Say This, Oh, I, One, Ali, My, Morai, Pa, My, Ali, Lung, Oh, My, Code, Eh, My, Morai, Pa, My, Code, Lung, Right. I, One, Am, Organized, No, My, Face, I, One, Tong, Lee, Organized, Again, Eh, I, One, Kina, Think, Eh, I, One, Tong, Be, Wa, Pa, Oh. No, My, Look, Pe, Ah, Look, Pa, Come, To, My, Oh, My, Way, Would Be, Pon, Dos, You, Oh, On, Lo, Jag, Oh, Ni, Afghanistan, This And That. So, Now, Lagos State, On, No, Thousands Of. Boko, Ah, Ram, Ni, Lagos State, Thousands Of Them, Me, My, Bia, I, One, Ya, Ti, Bon, Only, Right, Thousands Of Them. They Announce It This Week, Oh, It, Get, Ah, No, Announce Eh. Because, One, Fu, On, Ni, Ah, What, Down, Tong, Mo, Ah, Oh, Boko, Ah, Ram, Eh, Tong, Ah, Mo, Eh, One, Fu, On, Ni, Ah, What, Ni, A, Hotel. One Of This Hotel, I Think, A Hotel, So. One Thousand Of Them, No, More. Ah, Thousands, Tong, Ah, Yeah, Kina, Fi, One, She, Shant, Fi, One, Le, Con, No, Mal, Oh, See. Eh, Okay, Oh, Ya, Padani, Ah, Be, One, One, Fu, One, See, Eh, Kiri, Kiri. Bogo, Kottan, Son, It's About Time, Eh, Que, Governor Of Lagos State, Ati, Bogo, Ah, Le, Yoruba, To, Come, Ah, Ban. Motorbike, Lego, Because, Tabash, Eh, Eh, Okwaso. Tabash, Eh, Okwaso, Go, Because, I, Boys, Don't, Lo, Motorbike, Eh, I, One, Ah, Boki, Eh, Don't, Lo, Motorbike, Eh. I, Ma, Pa, Eh, Ti, Eh, Que, Because, I, People, Ah, My, So, Where, Ma, Pa, Oh, Lonnie, They Know Every Street. So, The Governor, Eh, Ti, Oh, Cola, Eh, Obati, Ji, Tobasun, Kui, Ah, Ki, Te, Jinsim, Tobay, Eh, Que, Okay. I, Ma, Que, Can, Oh, Ni, Bogo, I, Don't Know, Me, Oh, Me, Omo, So, It's About Time, Eh, Ya, Taba, I, Ma, Governor, Eh, Go, So, For. Don't, Don't, Bad, Eh, Get, Tinubu, Ni, Go, So, For, Talk, Pa, She, For, Because, Oh, No, I Believe, We, Oh, No, Ma, Pa, She, For, Oh, I, One, Ya, Ta, On, Ni, Ah, Gada. That, She, I Don't Know, So, Oh, God, Eh, First, On, Yeah, Oh.
Eh, She, Ah, Mister, Otomo, Thank You. Eh, Joe, Enjoy, Ni, Can, Ni, Cut, Oh, She, First, Oh. And, Can, Baba, Ah, Prince, Kalaja, Eh, Murray, Eh, Eh, Just, Sit, In, Me, Oh, Where, Eh, Me, God, Eh, First, Oh. Prince. She, First, Oh, Nisa.
Hey, Hey, Joe, Eh. Me, Oh, One, Eh, Simbe, Ni, Eh, Ba, Ondasi, Shubomi, Oh, Ni. Ah, Fah, Ni, That, Eh, I, Will, Call, Due To Existing Condition. Ni, Me, Oh, She. Nda, Si, Oru, Tori. Kumada, Eh, Ni, Ki, At, The, So, Oh. Eh, Oru, Ma, So, Wah. Ah. Oje, Nko, Eh, Van, Oje, From, Me, That, Ri, Ah, One, Poti, Un, Share, Le, Ni. Ah, Ujo, Wa, Pa, Pa, Ni, Le, Yoruba. Ah, But, Eh, Gage, Eh, Be, In, Kotti. Eh, Me, Ti, Oh, Ni, Ah, You. Ah, That, She, Ni, Won, Bati, Me. Ni, At, Be, Nkobi, Oh, Joe, Pupos. Ah, Oh, Do, Pupos, Eh, Ah, Color, On, Coffee, Code, De, Le, Fu, Eh, Ni, To, Ku, I, One, Be. Ah. Madame Janet. Ah, Fashion, Eh. Ah. Ah, Beka, Let, Eh, One, Ni, Ni, Le, Ki, One, To, Do, Look, Me. Ah, Oh, Joma, One, Kotti, Mon, If, Eh, Sit, Me, No, De, Ambishi, Ni, Ah, Katat, Eh, Me. Ah. Eh, Eh, Ni. Ilu, Wa, Ti, At, The, Bo. Ah. I, One, Kokon, Wa, Ti, Oh, Share, Eh, Oh, De, Share, Eh, Sing. Ah, Ti, Ah, Ba, So, Oh, Ah, So, Oh, Eh, Pe, Tinubu, Tinubu. Ti, Ah, Ba, So, Oh, Ah, So, Oh, Baba, Wa, Ah, Olo, Ah, Omi, De, Je, Eh, They Are Two Opposite Persons, Ti, Ko, She, Fi. Ah, Ko, She, Fi, Compare. But, In, Kotti. Ah, Ah, Fah, Ni, Ti, Tinubu, Ni. Ti, Baba, Wa, Olo, Oh, Kuni. Ah, Oje, Ki, Wa, Eh, Pe, Ah, Be, In, Corre, Re, Con, She, Le, Ti, De. Ah, I, Ja, Bara, Wah, Eh, I, Ja, De, Eh, Gage, Eh, Ni, Two, More. Ah, Beka, Let, Eh, Be, More, Yoruba, Ni, Ni, Le, Te, Le, Te, Le. Ah, Ni, Eh, No, She, Da, Be, Ni, Pe. Ah, Idjoko, Me, Mo, Come, Ah, Wu, Ah, Wu, Eh, Tori, Oko, Ti, Ah, So, So, Ja, Ah, Men, It, Oh, Ma, Ba. Ah, Ki, She, Pe, Boy, Ah, Mon, Ni, Eh, Ru, Ah, Don't, De, Yoruba, Me, Cause, Sing, Oh, Eh, Rubudu. Eh, Ba, Oru, Wah, Ni, De, Yoruba. Ah. Ombo, Ombo, Ah, Well, Ah, Ah, One, La, De, La, De, De. Oh, Ni, Oru, Wa, Ti, Mbo, La, Te, Fe, Be, Eh, Snid, Eh, One, Ba, Eh, Tori, Li, De, Ti. You, Not, Oh, Do, Lo, 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 Le, Oh, Ti, Can, Wa, Gong, Gong. Ah, But, Ni, If, Oh, Con, Si, Eh, Pe, Lu, Come, By, Eh, Ma, Share, Eh. Ni, Can, Be, Oh, Do, Me, Do, Go, Saying. But, But, Oh, De, Wa, Share, Eh, Kine, Kotti, Ah, Fe, Gishi. Ah, Ni, Me, Do, So, Ah, Beka, Le, Wah, Ni, Ah, Yoruba, Yoruba Directorate, Which, Kosh, Je, She, Eh, Pe. Um, If, Oh, Joka, Lo, Mbo, La, Fe, She, Si. Ah, You, Ah, Wa, Ti, De, Pe, Ah, Ni, Ah, Fah, Ni, That, Eh, Mon, Kotti, Oh, Law. Ni, Le. Ah, Ki, Le, To, More, Oh, Ni. Ah, Mon, Ni, Ah, Fah, Ni, That, Eh, Baby, Ah, Be, Community, Meta, Men, Eh, So, Oh. Me, Le, Wa, Ba, One, Be, Ba, Eh, Eh, The, Joke, Eh, Wa, She, Ah, No, For, Me, Ah, Be, Ke, Wa, Support, Me, Tori. Oh, Ba, Ti, Mon, Ni, No, Ni, Mo. Ni, Mo, Finish, Oh. Ah, Eh, I, One, Ti, Wah, Ni, Obu, Mo, Shoni, Oh, Ni, Kawa, She, Tong, Ke, Im, Ah, She, Ti, Ni, Oh, Yo. Shubon, Ah, Ma, Agba, Wah, Ni, No, Do, Eh, Pe. Kubodo, Su, Ah, Kubodo, Le, Wah. Ah, Fu, I, One, Kotti, Ah, She, Eh, Gage, Eh, Ak, Ti, Oh. Ti, Aba, Je, Omo, Yoruba, Lot, Oh. Ah, Eh, Ke, Lo, Do, Ma, Ti. Eh, Ni, Ti, Oh, Ba, Be, She, Ti, Eh. Ah, Be, Ah, She, Falot, Oh, Ah, Dran, Eh, Pe, Kujase, Ra, Oh, Te, Ah, Falot, Si, Kujase, Ra, Oh.
Ah, Sure.
Eh, Ni, To, Ba, She, Ti, Eh. Ah, Ti, Ah, Ye, Bali. Ki, On, Omo. Ah, Be, Ah, Ki, Ah, Ye, Ri, Ki, On, Obo, Ni. Shubon, Ah. Eh, Biti, Bogo, Oh, Do, Do, Si, To, Do, Do, Co. Ah, Gage, Eh, Be, Mo, She, Tim, Man, Son, Ni, Ah, One. Bu, Eh, Eh, Biti, Mo, Tichi, Aba, Pad, Eh, Alab, Pa, De, Ah, One, Eh, Ya, Ti, Me. Ah, Uh, Da, Ben, Eh, Pe, Talk, It's Cheap. Ah. I, One, Kudie, Kudie, Eh, Aba, Li, La, Ni, Alawa. Boy, Ah, Tabama, Identify, Eh, Can, Identify, So, That We Can Move Forward. But, Kamak, Con, Dem, Ah, One, Ya, Con, Tori, Pe. In, Kotti, One, She, La, Be, Le, Cause, See, Oh, She, She, Kudie, Eh, Pe, Ah, Mo, Ah, Be, Eh, Kudie, Si, Wa, Lo, Do. So, Ah, Eh, Mo, She, So, Oh, Long, Afu, Wah, She. Ah. Oku, Oku, Oh, Ni, Bon, Lu, Kude, Bodo, Ah, This, Eh, Pe, Oh, Ti, Tong, Pa, Da, Pa, Ta. Eh, Tori, Oh, She, She, Be, Le, Ni. Yorio.
Hello, To.
Eh, She, Go.
Hello.
Eh, Pe, Eh, She, Go, Eh, Thank You Very Much, Prince. Bofe, Pe, Ah, One, Baba, Wa, Shuri, Con, Eh, Pa, La, Ka, Ah, Get, Parting Shot.
You Need, Eh, Doctor, You, You, Eh, Pe, You, Now.
Eh, Munda, Munda, Oh, No, Munda, Munda.
Okay.
Doctor, She, First, Oh, Ni, Ah, Be, Ka.
Yeah, Bofe, So, Eh, She.
Okay, Go, Eh, She.
Yeah, Thank You. Uh, Oh, Chi, Prince, Kalis, Jai, So.
Yeah.
Who Are Very Important, Goni. I, One, Eh, Magia, Back, Eh, Eh, I, One, Yo, Wah. An Intensity Of Hiding Behind Silence.
Hmm.
Barista.
Yes, Sir.
Eh, You And I, I Have Spoken About This Many, Many Months Ago.
Yep.
Eh, But, Eh, She, Awareness, Awareness, Awareness. Enlightenment, Enlightenment, Enlightenment.
Hmm.
Ah, Per, But, Kina, When, Ya, Wah, She, So Far.
Hmm.
That Was Shortly Before, Taber, Eh, See, Co, Who Said, The Motorcycle, See, Ah, Wa, Koya.
Hmm.
Chakon, Got, Oh, Soft, One, Eh, 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 Ma, Wali, Got, Oh, She, One, She, La, Be, Le.
Hmm.
Eh, Bokbo, Oh, Oh, La, Be, Le, One, They, Ki, Oh, More.
Hmm.
Oh, Ah, Turn Out, Eh, Those Are All Big Liars, Oh, She, Do. Oh, She, Do. You Know, Eh, Ma, Eh, You Know, I, One, Call, Wa, Po.
Yes, Sir. Yes, Sir.
Hello?
No, I, Me, Call, On, Bar, Eh, Much, Bar.
Okay, Ni, Wa, Po, Le, Yoruba. Ta, Like, Latin, Eh, Because Of The Low Level, Thirty, The, Thirty, The Center, From Our Previous Higher Level. Where We Use, Got, Oh, Man, Put, Ti, Ah, Oh, Sociologist, Man, Put, The Denial Of Events. Ta, If, Denying, Go. I, Ma, Wali, I, She, I, Ma, Wali, I, I, She, Le, Be, Eh, One, They, Ni, Pa, Oh. One, They, She, Mkokon. And These Are People Who Had Gone To Church, Turned, Oh, Pray, Turned, Oh, Se, Musk, Turned, Oh, Pray. That They Will, They Will Just Give Out This Information, Which Are Not Based On Truth. So, Eh, Magia, Back, Eh, Oh, Oh, Prince, Kalaja, Eh, So, Oh, 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 Mo, Bo, Wa, Oh, Of, Ah, Mo, Yo. She, Gue, Maga, Eh, Po, Wa, Po, Le, Wah, You See. To, Eh, Que, They Hide Behind Silence, Eh, Eh, Ma, Wali, And She. Back To You.
Eh, She, Go, Sir. Thank You Very Much. Hmm. You See, Kabab, We, Oh, La, Kabab, We, Oh, Joy, Eh, Can. Oh, No, Oh, No, Oh, No. Sister, Your Parting Shot.
Eh, Me.
Bene, Sir, Bene, Man.
Okay, Yeah. Ah, You, Kotti, Parting Shot, You, New, Drink, Eh, We, Oka, Tati, So, You, No, Ni, Pe, Ki, One, Ji, Come, Ah, Soon. This Is The Time, Latin, Come, Gen, You, See, I, One, Baba, Wa, Oh, Ni, Filah, Olo, Oh. We've Had Enough, We, Pe, Ah, She, In, Kokola, Bele. Eh, She, Si, Bang, Ba, Ka, Of, Lan, You, Not, Le, Be, Ru, Wa, Eh, Eh, Ah, 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 Ni, Baba, To, To, Bogule. Bele, Eh, Oh, No, Eh, In, Lot, Ton, Come. At, At, Eh, At Date Of Ninety, Eh, Eighty, Eighteen, Konkon. Agbalaba, To, Bash, In, Be, Ru, Oh, My, Ah, Le, Ni, Tori, Cause, You, Are, You, De, No. So, I, Eh, Mobile, Pe, Eh, Agbalaba, To, Ba, Tw, Eight, Eighty, Eighty, Ninety, To, Bam, Be, Ru, Ku, Dam, Is, Pre, Sure, Well, Oh, More. So, At That Age. Oh, Yeah, Ke, One, Machine, Conto, Dat, Oh, Eh, My, That, My, Peace, Eh, Be, Ba, Not, To, My, Que, See, Oh, Long, Eh, Pe. Bogo, Ba, Te, Eh, Kati, She, La, Ti, Ke, Ki, Ri, Ke, Wa, Ma, Be, Res, Ni, Toro, Fund, Da, Reg, She, Tori, Ah, La, Ni, You, Wa. Eh, Ah, Bogo, Ah, One, Ah, Tong, Tong, Pa, You, Oh, Oh, My, Dark, Eh, Ni, Oh, Ma, So, Oh. Oh, No, Ah, For, You, Ji, Ah, So, Eh, She, Mash, Eh, But, Eh, And, Tabash, One, Be, Ru, Kuni, Eh, Je, Eh. Be, Be, Bastard, You. Because, Cause, And, To, My, Be, Eh, 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 Forever, Bogo, Ah, No, Am, Ah.
Oh, Yeah.
Ah, Ti, Had Enough Of, You Are Doing It Underground, Eh, She, Ni, Outside, Grand, Wah. Af, Under, Grand, Eh, Ma, Af, Af, Over, Over, Grand, Eh, Ba, Not, To, My, Que. Over, Grand, La, Fe, Si, Eh, We Want To See.